Position in the past. So as we started kind of vetting this position, I guess I would start by saying we didn't know that we needed a full-time position for this. But we also had needs and those are competing priorities within the district. There's always buildings that have positions that they might request either informally through Dr. Way or many times formally through Dr. Way. And there's always these competing positions. Certainly, we knew that we had needed the high school for another support staff. So we kind of looked at it from the onset as a support position that would help with communications primarily, but our highest need there, which is athletics and high school activities. So streamlining those and making sure they get out right. Some other support duties that would be primarily for the athletic director. And then the other half of that position looked a little more like maybe a more traditional PR position, but with more of a focus on digital media, because we know that's where everybody's looking right now. But you can see, and there was a question that was sent to me from one of our board members that said, "That's a lot of duties." It really is. And we were aware of that. It was just that we think that it's really going to be highly reliant on the person we get, what skill set they bring to us. And I think that that job description could change. We'll pare some things back and there may be a few things added as time goes on. The last thing I would mention is, you know, I made the comment, I believe, to Mr. President yesterday that when I'm talking to my colleagues, I'm talking about, you know, especially in my Southern Missouri network, about Wright City and talking about a district that potentially may be the fastest-growing school district in the state will certainly be in the top half of that or top group of that. And then, you know, I might get a wild-eyed look and I say, "Well, keep in mind Troy was that district last year. That's our border. Wentzville was that district four years prior, four, four years prior." So that's not so hard to believe. Like a lot of our positions, I think this position could grow to a full-time position, you know, sometime in the future. So while it might look like it is a hybrid position, it's very specific to Wright City, I think it fits our need right now. I could see it growing to be in something that looks a little more traditional in a public relations officer type of position. We didn't feel that that was the need exactly right now.
Questions? Michael? Mary?
No, I have none.
Is this going to be a sour position?
It is not. It's hourly. It's, and by the way, although I was had a little heavier hand on it, because I should mention, it will direct report to both the athletic director and to me. And so I had a little heavier hand on this and so I'm kind of out in front on Dr. Way on this. Certainly he can help. But Dr. Way was on the secretary column position, correct? And it did, but it does have additional days added to it. So 215 as opposed to 190 or 200? Yeah.
So it isn't something that staff can do, extended days or stipend or any of that, right? You're looking for a separate employee?
That is correct. And you know what? We did think about that, Mr. Mike, is for sure, because those are sometimes some good opportunities to do that. We are in a different place right now where, you know, if you think of those opportunities for our staff members that maybe that might at one time been looking for more money or pick up. Those, that's, that's not the reality we're in right now. I mean, getting people to do summer school, coaching sponsorships, and, you know, I think it's reflective of what we're seeing across the nation, but people are kind of burned out. I think people, you know, kind of made some connection to COVID and all that. That's been a tougher get for us lately to like say, "Hey, we'll give you $3,500 to pick up these extra duties." Certainly, yeah, we thought it needed to be, that needed to be pretty central to this new position.
When are we going to advertise?
Yeah, when the board approves it, we'll try to get out there. I'll mention since, that's a good question, how surprising to us, or to me, I guess, is this is one of the few positions that just hitting the board agenda, we had two people inquire.
Oh, good.
Already. And, yeah, neither guaranteed, neither going to apply for it, but I was pleased that two people, actually one inquired with me and one inquired with Dr. Way. So that's pretty rare for these times, too.
Okay, any other questions regarding the communications digital media specials? Okay, we need a motion to approve the communication digital media specialist activities director secretary position for the 22-23 school year.
Second?
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard five zero.
I apologize. I just scrolled down and seen where you, when I looked, when I was reading this at home, it only got to the first page.
Oh, you see the other duties?
I do. I didn't think the duties were that bad and then I just see this and I'm like, "Oh, wow."
It's kind of a doubled up thing, you know.
Sorry, I just didn't scroll far enough.
Okay, Wright City High School planning, Dr. Berger.
Yeah, I'm going to turn this over to Eric from Bond Artex, but lots of follow-up from previous meetings. And then also we have our, we've been all waiting on this cost estimate that we thought might come in June or July, and here we are in July. And so we do have an updated cost estimate. And Eric will work through this, but we'll take our time. And if you have any questions, please ask them now. And between Eric and I, we'll try to get answered or find somebody who can. Flo, is your turn?
Thank you. Okay, so kind of coming back from, last time I was here, maybe the time before, when I dropped off materials, selections were made, items were inspected. The exterior palette selected was this color here with kind of the, if you remember, the kind of grayish silver brick as the main material. And then this is just a reminder of kind of the palette that was selected for the interiors, which is kind of the blue and neutral framed for the interiors. So just, just an update for you guys that we're heading down a path on our colors and materials. We think we've got most of that figured out now. There's, there'll be some tweaks as we go through, but definitely in, it's looking pretty good. Okay, so we had some conversations last time about the baseball field alternate and what we were going to do down there as far as the restrooms. We were talking about the expense and what were our options besides port potties, right? Several people were heavily against port potties. So three options we came up with. One is a pump, lift, station, grinder with a force main that basically takes stuff from a restroom and connects to the force main for the main building. That is option one. It came in about $25,000 for that system. Septic system, we looked into, weren't sure if we would even be allowed to do that. But with some conversations with the community and the city, they would allow us to do it. The estimate on it came in at about $75,000. The third option is a rentable trailer, which is basically a higher-end port potty system. It's still contained in a thing, but it's more like a larger trailer with nicer finishes and ADA accessible, all those kinds of things. You can rent those out for about $25,000 for four months or $85,000 for a year. I will tell you, I thought option one was going to be higher than 25, and I was really surprised at how high the trailer was.
So on option one, does that include the building and the toilets and all that?
It does not. It's just to make sure we have sanitary.
Because I think one of the things that Heidi was asking was, okay, that's fine, you have a sanitary force main, but now I got to put a building over it, put toilets and sinks and everything else in there. So where does that take, you know, the issue is, where does that take option one and option two, you know, if I got to put a building in there to actually?
So the building, let's say the restroom building is part of that alternate. I'm blanking on how much I had, but let's say it's $100,000 for a restroom building. To put it on a septic system, you add $75 to it. To put it on a force main, you add $25 to it. If you do with the trailer, it's $25,000, probably for spring, $25,000 for fall, if you did four and four and not the full year. But that's continually every year. So you can get to that question. The question is, do you want a trailer or do you want a restroom? And the restroom with a force main is the most economic option.
Yeah, and the thing that I would add to this is, and Eric's already hit a little here, is the sanitary force mains, pump, lift station, I did not have this pegged as being that costly. I really, I mean, I think I was thinking more about the $75,000. And as you're going to see in the upcoming slides, when we get into the cost estimate, we are in a position where, as predicted, this, everything's going higher, you know, so the cost estimates do not work in our favor, the third-party cost estimate. So it's never easy to pick up dollars. In fact, we did a long page turn today of the plans and it was hard not to start looking at things that we might start considering pulling back on. But this one, if we're going to do, it comes out, if we're going to do the alternate as a baseball softball field, it's going to have restrooms. And for $25,000, I didn't pull this out as a standalone vote. I thought it was probably pretty obvious. I think we're good to do this on the, for option one. If that's agreeable, board. In fact, in the minutia that we work, you know, outside the board meeting, if we had that pegged at $25,000, it would have been in there from the get-go. It's just that not that $25,000 is not a cost. If you're talking about a project that is in excess of $50 million, this is a big decision, you know. So I think in the end, as Eric will show you here, admit, your new alternate with baseball and softball fields, those are still under development. I keep emphasizing this, all of it's under development, but certainly that part is, we would include the restrooms with the option one to support those. And we'll give you a number for that in just a minute.
Any other questions on that?
Is there any hesitation of not going with option one as that develops?
I think that's perfect.
Okay, if it was a bigger, if it was a closer number or there was another discussion, I pulled it out as a standalone, but I thought we were good on that. So seemed quite obvious.
Heidi will be happy.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so this is the Roker Road and our new road that goes along the northern border of our property. This is showing the turn lane. So through the traffic study and work with the civil engineers, we've got one entrance. This is one of the entrances on Roker, but one way in and two ways out. So there's a right turn, a left turn, and a left turn also to go straight across onto Horseshoe. On Roker Road, per the traffic study and what the city really would like to see is a turn lane into that first entrance. So that would require them to widen the road a little bit on each side and add that center turn lane. Crosswalks here, this crosswalk would get across Roker all the way to the building. And then a crosswalk here, basically the fast lane, a little bit of sidewalk and a crosswalk there, so that those two existing subdivisions basically have kids that want to walk to school, they'll have a safe way to do it.
How much front yard is that house, I don't live there, going to lose?
Survey hasn't been done there yet.
On best line or on?
But I'm told, I'm told there's more room on this side, so I don't know that it's going to necessarily equally share that split. It might push more on this side to get that lane in.
Yeah, because I mean, there's not, she doesn't.
It looks really close.
It is.
Yeah, it looks really close.
It is close. She might not be happy.
Yeah, and I don't know the rideaway, but there's a, there's a rideaway on each side of it, as most roads have, that we would have to stay within anyway. We don't want to get into that, anything outside of that, but it does look close.
Maybe you ought to go drive over there and look at it, just so you could get a visual of it.
Yeah, the engineers are going to work through getting a survey, so we'll know exactly where it's at versus the right way and the existing road versus working on the aerial photo that's not always as accurate.
So do we have, are we the ones paying for widening Roker and adding the turn lane and everything?
That's my understanding.
And that wasn't in our original plan, am I correct?
No.
Before we go to that next slide, just hang it up there just a little bit longer. I want to cover the cost estimate with that and specifically a question that came from a board member that I think, you know, that needs to be aired with the entire board was, did the, had the permit that was conditional upon the improvements to Roker Lane, does that impact any delays for the district? And so I think that that's the easier question. Did the action the city took in terms of making the permit conditional to the three lanes, does that delay the, our project at all?
No.
Right? Because it's still in design.
Yeah, the construction timeframe on our project, this won't hurt us.
And then the second question that I think is important for the board to, no one asked, I mean, a question that needs to be asked and aired is, we don't have a hard cost estimate on this. We're working on one, but we do have, we can throw a number at you that we feel.
We're trying to hold a number for it at this point, so we have more details about the exact infrastructure that's around that piece of the road.
So where are you going to throw it at?
Well, I was going to say, you know what, it was going to be a little bit of a punchline, because getting a number out of these guys without them going, it's reminiscent of Connie Box days. But we do have a number that's held in there. We can air the number that we have there.
Yeah, so we're around $200,000 for that piece.
For that piece, but that does not include the north entry. So I think.
There will be a little bit more to make this a little bit wider.
We're hopeful 350 will catch it. I think that's realistic.
Yes.
The crosswalks, what are they?
Painted.
Painted. They'll have a sign with the yellow flashing light on them. Yeah, and they'll connect to sidewalks or whatever the sidewalk that's there to.
There's a lot of concern with that coming over that hill on Roker right up into that intersection there. So I've heard it mentioned that there might be some flashing signs put there to warn people coming over that hill to caution.
The city mentioned that.
The city might, yeah, the city might do that. They also mentioned that they could put, you know, stop signs up if they found it necessary. I know the, the school zoning or regulations that the engineers were talking about required to be reduced to 25 miles per hour through that section because of the distances. There's, it's a decent distance, but because of the slight incline, reducing the speed is the appropriate speed for the distance, like distances they have for safety.
Yeah, there's a little, there's a lot of discussion about, well, if you put the schools on to 25, who's going to follow that? Well, remember, we do have an SRO that we pay for, that we will have onsite, highly visible there. So during school hours, we can feel confident about regulating that. Of course, the city does a good job of that anyway, but, you know, I don't have too big a concern. I mean, obviously you're always having someone's feet around that. If we can knock that down to 25, we'll never get taken when they don't do 25, so.
To get in the school zones, huh?
Yeah, you don't. Those will help pretty soon.
We need to keep safety in our number one, on the front, so whatever we need to do to get that, keep that safe for our kids and the families that are applying in there.
I assume this is probably coming, so $350,000 wasn't in our budget, so what probably think we're going to have to cut out?
Well, you know, we've got probably a lot of work to do in terms of bringing you guys some options after this meeting, because you're going to see it in the cost estimate. And that work started today. Like I said, between, I didn't spend that much time. I spent half that time. Dr. Way spent eight hours with the Bond team today. I think the legend cutting came in when I wrapped it in after the move, but I kept hearing the conversation, the opportunities that we may have. So we've got a lot of work to do, but we'll bring you some options. We'll get into that in just a minute, Michael, in terms of next steps after you provide the full picture of the information. I'll give you a couple of the next things that I think we need to probably tackle, so.
On the entrance, is that at the top of the hill? Are you going to be able to see then? So I'm correct, there's a hill here, like kind of where the crosswalk is there on your map on the right, correct?
The slope goes up that way, so it's really at the bottom.
Yeah, you're at the bottom there, Dave.
So, I mean, if we're worried about the incline at that hill, why don't we move the entrance next to fast lane?
It does not improve it. And actually, I'm sorry, Eric, I will tell you, from whenever Jim and I went out there, the incline gets really steep from fast lane to where we'd move the road. And so you're actually at a better visible place when you're across approximately, what is that, Horseshoe Court? But that's not the, that's kind of the layman's view of it. There's actually a better rationale for pulling it across from Horseshoe Court. I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, so trying to keep, there's a distance you want to keep between roads that are on the same side. And in the future, let's say, development continues to explode out there and this road becomes three lanes or four lanes. Eventually, there may be an intersection and you want, you don't want to have a road here, a road here, and a road here. This becomes a better place for intersection for future. And then in the distance going towards the city, this helps us a little bit on that hillside, too, for this building. We have two more entrances along, going this way on the fence of the property. This is just the main one as that hill goes up.
So at the board of aldermen meeting, we were there, this was the, you know, I mean, I think originally, the original plan had it closer to Dave's point, closer to fast lane. And then this was kind of like where the aldermen and the city settled on in terms of basically saying, in order for us to get our permits, this is kind of what they, what they talked about and how it came about.
You see my point, though? If you're coming over a hill, the further you get away from the top of that hill, you would think would be the safer route.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I want to make sure, because I know, you know, that ground better than I do, but I can tell you, whenever we went out there, what we were looking at was, if you moved off of fast lane, you know, it takes a pretty heavy incline there, now I'm going south. And you can see farther up on the hill that's to the south at that, at that intersection, the new intersection.
You can see further down here.
Correct. That is correct.
Really?
Yes, because the, it's, like I say, it's pretty steep or it's steeper there from where it currently, where it's proposed to where it was at the beginning. Now, Dave, I would, I wouldn't think I would take you to task on that if you have a different perception.
No, I'm not certain.
What I believe we, Jim and I both, that assault would be right there. But I, again, I know I'm talking to a guy that knows that ground.
No, I, I just, just comment said, seemed to me like the further you get away from the top of the hill, the more time we have, but that's fine. I think that's where it's kind of goes, where it's got to go.
When you move on to our site, this new road that goes all the way to F, having this turn at the end also is a little bit of a safety thing when you come down through there that you're going to have to slow down before you get to that stop.
So that'll connect with the road that goes all the way to F?
That is.
That can do that.
That's right. All right, so this is base bid. You've seen the previous estimate numbers here. We've added in a few things like permitting fees. We've been talking with the city and the fire department about those. So we added a number into there. The $200,000 rough number for the widening of Roker is in this also. It's in, not the previous one, but it's in the third-party one. We had them added in after the meeting. So new high school, phase one, 26.7 versus 33.7.
It's a decent jump. It's not.
Yeah, but you got to take that to the additional 2.1 million added to that 26.
This is for the site, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a 28.
28 to 30.
That's almost, you're 28 to 29. So it's a three million, it's a three and a half million. It's not five million, like, or seven million?
It's not, yeah, sorry. It's not the full 26 to 33. The site's only in his 33. But it is an increase, which isn't unexpected, but, you know, we're trying our best to keep it within our target goal. East Elementary went down a little bit from his estimate versus ours. The existing high school and renovated this building for the new VCC, we did not have him estimate, so that number is identical because it's still our number. Aid fees down a smidge. The biggest thing that you'll see was different from our numbers to his are one of the bigger ones, escalation and contingency. He had a number of seven and five. We were using four and five, four for the escalation, five for the contingency. He's got a 7% in there for escalation, so that jumped it up another half a million or so. Permitting fees, we used his, or we used our permitting fees. His were higher, but since we've talked to the city, we know kind of where they verbally told us we're going to be for permitting, same with fire. So we're not using his number. His number was about $350,000. So we took out that $250. It helps our goal. Contractor fees, previously, if you go back and look, we had our contractor fees into this number, but since he pulled them out separate, we did the same so you can compare. His number is probably the highest he's seen as we questioned him on it. It's about 19% for general overhead contractor, general. So that's another three million roughly. To get our total for base at currently 51, we're at 43.8. It's about 15%.
Is the third party San Catherine?
No, third party is Ahol. He's a third-party estimate, that's what he does for, he used to be in construction. We've used him a few times in the past. I should know his full name of this company, but it's Ahol. Any specific questions?
Why would the contractor fees be such a difference? I mean, I don't, I, what assumptions were you making versus what assumptions was it the estimate?
We're using 14% and he's using 19. The number can be anywhere from 20 to, or 12 to 19 with what we've seen on projects. We personally haven't seen 19, but he said he has seen one recently that was as high as 19.
So he basically just took the high, the high mark and?
He took the conservative route, yeah.
So I'll give you my hammer here, you know, the contractor.
We hope so.
I'll give you the sludge.
So our alternates, football stadium, this looks like a bigger jump than it is because we have some of our grading in our other number. This is a standalone number, so the 2.5 to the 4.2 is everything in that football stadium alternate is one piece. If we don't, say you guys, the numbers come in high and we don't pick the alternate, we still are going to have to do some of that grading work because of the topography over there to get the road and the flow into the retention pond. because of the topography over there to get the road and the flow into the retention ponds and stuff like that. So, his number does make it look higher, but it's, it is covered. But we're gonna go with his number. It's more conservative on, on the total. Performance gym, 6.2 versus 5.2. He estimated it as a deduction from the project because we had it shown, you know, it's kind of in the building, it's part of it. So he did it as a deduct out of there and we pulled it out and put it back in as an add, but we used his number as the deduct. I feel comfortable with it. Baseball and softball, his number went up a little bit from ours, about 100, 120,000. Cafeteria, his number's a little bit lower than we had.
No, it's not. 553, 564.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking up the next one. His one up. AE fees went down.
I mean, why? Because you can't do that.
I know, I can't. Same thing with contingency, so there's about 300,000 there because of that 7%. If, if we go with the, we're, we're going with the north conservative, so we're using his numbers. We didn't, we didn't want to go back. We're just gonna keep going before we add, but it does push our overall numbers up. Permitting, again, we've got numbers that we feel comfortable with, with our discussions. Contractor fees, the same thing, our number versus, versus his. And then our project total, 57 versus the 60, almost 67. That's to get everything on, on the wish list.
The, the third party estimator, was he using, I guess, you know, urban prices versus rural prices or? I mean, I mean, does it make a difference? Like, let's say I was gonna build this high school in Montgomery County versus, and if it wouldn't, would his numbers be different?
I believe he does do it by location. I, I think it does change based on where the site is.
So he must be assuming that we're gonna do more of an urban school, you think?
Okay, so this is the cafeteria kind of comparison. I took a trip out to Warrington. Took a look at their cafeteria and their theater. I'll call it cafeteria and theater because it's really two rooms. They, for better or lack of terms, they built a theater and a stage. They built a tier seating, it's seven tiers, and then around it is the cafeteria seating. They don't, they don't overlap each other like what we've got planned, so the space is pretty big. Our size is about 6700 square feet. Theirs is about 11,000 square feet. Or if we did the tiered, ours would be 11,000. Theirs is about almost 10,000 square feet. The, the added cost for adding, you know, 4,000 square feet is substantial for, for a cafeteria and auditorium. The other thing that we want to do is we're really trying to stick to three lunch periods. That's what everyone's would prefer. They have four lunch periods, serving 250 kids at a time. We are planning on three lunch periods with 400 students each at max. So, yeah, oh, the other thing, our current cafeteria, the way we have it laid out with the portable stage and the seat, we're gonna get 500. There, the way theirs is built, they can only hold 360. We could actually more, a lot more seating. We don't get the tiers, but we do get more seating. But the stage is up, it's, you know, it is raised. And then the comparison, we're at 1.6 versus 2.6. If we want to enlarge it. We think we know where you guys would like to be, but that's, that's a comparison between the two. Then again, just based on Warrington's size and what I saw when I was out there and talking to the principal.
So to kind of sum that, it's, it's, it's nice to have the tiers, but it's gonna come with a cost if, if we choose to do that in light of the rest of the information we assume. Now, you can tell us now if you want us to dig down into this and explore this further, but at that cost, it's, you know, it's gonna have to come from somewhere and we're trending the wrong direction, so. Michael?
No, I'm perfectly satisfied with the one currently out. I mean, the tiers are maybe nice, but not at a cost of a million, initial dollars.
Mary?
I say stay with the 1.6 and the decision's made.
Plus it, it, it will hold more people.
It will.
In the theaters itself.
I'm more worried about how you're gonna feed 400 students at a time.
Well, since we only have, what, 550?
Yeah.
Maybe that, maybe for, not for a while anyway.
I tell you, and one thing, Ms. Graper, looking at those plans today gets you really excited when you see the, the plan. I know you guys have seen them, but you know, as we've got them laid out in the big prints, the difference in that cafeteria having three cert, or three points of entrance. It, it's, it's pretty amazing how, how much more efficient it can, it can be. I made the mouth, I wrote the mouth check today and I, I've experienced that, those, those cafeterias are designed like that. Where we have students literally lined up across the cafeteria currently, our current cafeteria. You will have, I, I'll make my number a little bit bigger than what I wrote in the mouth check today. You will have seven or 12 kids in line. I said seven or, or something, the Lord knows what it, it really does. It works very efficiently. And then the kids have more time to sit and, and kind of, you know, be buried for a long day, I guess, flow off some steam. So that's, it, it, it's, it's pretty neat. We are in the most constricted environment for our current cafeteria setting that you could, that you could be in. I know there are still many questions. I want to go back to one, a couple of things that, if you go back to the last slide there. And so keep in mind, you know, we are not, obviously, and I know I'm just making this, this point, this is not the bids. This is the due process, this is the due diligence you do to make sure that we don't get blindsided on bidding. So this isn't like some of the districts in our area where the bids came back and we were 90, is what we've heard reported over. We also know there was one close proximity that was 40% over. So this is out in front of that and we plan to stay out in front of that. We're four months to bid date in the most volatile time that I've been in the game, experienced. So, we'll see, you know, but I do think, kind of to where Michael was getting to, was okay, what does this mean? This does mean we have to be really much more careful about scope crew, whether it's from administration. We had staff in today that, that we have to keep, keep that, because nobody comes in and says we want less. You know, there's always more, so, and we'll certainly have to do that. We'll have to be aware of that as we move forward. And then we are sharpening our pencil. That's, I know that is meaning that we're going in looking what was really, really, really nice. And we've got some of those things already identified. I think we, we've identified them. Large some of those today, but we'll be bringing those to you in a future board meeting. And we'll do more towards that too. I think the other thing that we need to do is we need to bring Stiefel back in. And for another look and a little more solid look now that we've sold our bonds and some of our lease purchase certificates of what money we do have. Because we knew all along that, because we got assurances from them that they were gonna sell, or the bonds are premium value. We were gonna capture 37 million for Proposition 67. And they've told us that again, you know. And, but I would like to hear that right out of a horse's mouth one more time. And that, okay, now we're not getting 37 million from Proposition 67, we're getting X. And from your lease purchase certificates, you, you're not generating 15 million dollars, you're generating X. And they told us that, if you remember, from the very, very first workshop we did in Warrington on that. And they, they, they've followed through with that and now they've sold the bonds. But I'd like to get those solid numbers that we can get on paper and say, okay. Because they're still working off of the target number of 54 million. But the reality is, we've got more resource than that. We know, we're just not totally certain how much resource we have. And the other thing we need to do is explore any other options we have, you know, with, with Stiefel. And so if there are any other options. So I emailed Brandy and Joe today and they told me that they would have somebody here next board meeting who will have them slated for August. So that, you know, it'll become more known after that time.
At this point in time, do you see us having to get rid of one of these alternates?
Well, I certainly don't think it, with the information that we have right here, you know, so let's say that 57 is the big number and I'll, I'll write that mouth check because I've talked enough to Stiefel to know, I think what the information that I'm reading is about the 57 million dollar. I think that's gonna be a little bit conservative, but. So I think what's on the, the, the board for us to kind of talk about is if we have 57 million, it would have to come in at the better estimates. And is it possible it could come even better than that? Yes. Is it possible it could become up even more than the third party estimate? That's all, that's all possible. We just don't know. The bids will drive that. But to your point, we know we've got more resource, probably that 57 million dollar, probably between our lease purchase and our general obligation bonds. Maybe Brent will tell me we've got a little more money than that. I think he will help us a little bit with that. He may tell us we have another option. I don't know that. We haven't engaged deeply in those conversations. But it may be where the board needs to go ahead and prioritize those, those alternates. And, and keep in mind, you know, not, when we're talking about 50 million dollars. We know that we've increased our balances and projected increased our balances in fund for about $2 million over a pretty short period of time. That 2 million doesn't sound like very much in the, compared to 50 million, but 2 million does let us go if we fall short on one of these alternates. The board may choose to go take care of that outside of the project. In other words, take in all of the project and bid it, you know, after this project is done and, and out of the district offers. So there's more options on the table, but we just gotta get through them. This is the process. This is, this is what, what you do. We've not had the benefit of experience of that very much here, but this is, this is the sauce that makes it.
I'm sure you mentioned this question before when I asked you, but until the road between Walker and F, that's our expense, is that right?
It is right now. Now, we, we do have work from the city that, that, you know, they're, they're interested in. You know, in a partnership, it hasn't went any further than that. We know that there's, you know, some our money floating around for the county, for the city. We've certainly got our version of that investor. We have $700,000, 750,000. $750,000 committed to that road, which we, we can build a road for that. You know, it's gonna be paved probably depending on what alternates we took, but to the football stadium or potentially to the, to the baseball softball stadium. And then it's not gonna be paved. Because 750,000 dollars is not gonna give us the spec, like a city spec road that goes that distance. But it will let us put in the box culvert and it will let us put a road in on a budget. I mean, all that, that'd be the, that'd be the lowest number we can open, but we'll just have to do it within our budget. But I'm, I'm optimistic that the city has shown enough interest in that that maybe something will come through on that.
Did I hear something about trying to get a road in for that?
It's not on our end, but I, I believe that the city is looking at some opportunities for that, I guess that's right.
When you talk about these estimates that we have, do you make cuts before you go to bid? Or do you, do you go to bid, get the numbers and then cut? How is that work?
That is the dance, you know, because what we don't want to do is like cut a bunch of stuff out and then with the possibility, wherever you think that possibility is, let the bids come in low. And then we've got things off the board that we're not ready to go with. So I think it's more likely that we would kind of prioritize those prior, but still keep them in, in the bid. Now, if, if things, you know, the next four months got worse, it may be kind of like the former Art State where we said, this is not realistic anymore. Let's pull this one out. Or that we, or we can pull something out that we thought we had enough money in the district offers to take care of. So let's go and pull it out, take that out now. We've just got a lot of work to do. We're gonna hopefully bring you some proposals that the board can evaluate and analyze and say, okay, that's a direction we're gonna go and feel comfortable with. But it, it goes back also, on my pension, to what we said many times in the campaign. Because, you know, this inflation is not new today. This has been in place since we started. In fact, that's what I've spooked just about this whole day. And we said, and the board wisely so, wrote the Proposition 2025 language to support the projects of 1967. In other words, the, the lease purchase certificates could help support the core academic housing in Proposition 1967. East Elementary, the renovation of the high school, those things. And that was a really wise decision at that time because we, we could see the ride home wall that, that things at that time were trending up. And that has not moved yet, although I'd say it's flattened.
It's on what?
Depends on, no, you're talking to, yeah, that's it, I mean, really.
That's right.
The gas is coming down.
The gas is coming down, thank, yeah, that's right. It's a good sign. Those are all great questions and, you know, obviously we don't have all the answers to those tonight, but we, we will, we will start with. And like I said, I think the things that are, that are, that rise there is, we gotta talk to Stiefel, get a grip on how much money we do have. We've gotta bring you guys back some things of, hey, we've cut scope on a few of these things. And see and make sure that they're, you know, that we can swallow those things. And then we, we charge in October, potentially October, sometime between October and the spring. But where right now our target is, to end October or something.
End of October, beginning of November, where the goal is to have a month of bidding and get bids back in before holidays, before Thanksgiving.
I'll do a little preview and I know I'm getting a little bit long on this agenda, I'm gonna apologize. But, you know, I, I think that we're going to be able to, in the end, I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be okay. One thing that's going on in the, in the industry that I've never had to face in the projects I've done in the past is, you know, prices are so dynamic right now that they're putting contract language contractors are in, that they won't give you a firm price on some. So if you've got a project, and I'm not necessarily talking specifically to ours, but I've talked to a colleague of mine who had a project that was gonna go over two years. And for example, the asphalt that was gonna be on the end of that project, then we need to give them a firm price for that. So we're looking at how we can mediate, remediate some of that, you know, in front of some of those things. So we've got, we don't have anything to present tonight, but we're looking at some things to present to the board that might help us with some of those issues because it's just terrible to accept a bid that you don't know what the price is. I mean, and that's, that's kind of new, but that's, the contractors protect themselves. And their alternative to doing that is to give you the big price, right? You're either gonna protect yourself and say, work with us on the back, or you're gonna give my big number because they can't leave money on. So it's, it's a little bit of a new landscape, but we're gonna get through it and I think in the end we're gonna be, we're gonna find.
Anything else? Is that all the slides out there?
Yeah, I think that was it.
Okay, any other questions for? We, I'm assuming you'll be back next month?
Yeah, I think it will be. That's the plan.
That's the plan.
All right, drive safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next one is Facilities and Grounds Program Evaluation Report. Dr. Berger. Dr. Wayne?
Yeah, if you guys look at your document, there's a, a few things in there that are highlighted in yellow that I just want to talk about. You know, every year we talk about increasing efficiency. When I first started, we were kind of in the midst of some LED projects. Most of those have been completed. East is the only one that we haven't done it building wide. And we're just starting to do that as things are, boughs go down or something, we're starting to turn over to LED. We're doing that in our parking lots as well. Just this spring, we ordered, you know, hundreds of automatic faucets. We've installed those this summer and continue. We just have East to do and we should be done with that by the end of the summer. You know, bottle fillers installed in all of our buildings throughout that, throughout the district. I can't say enough about Brian Cahoon coming on board. He's been on board for about a year. He's done a great job. He's done a great job for us in the maintenance department. When we go down to safety under number five, you know, just this summer, Brian's done some things at the West vestibule to kind of keep parents and kids separated, whether it's a passenger window, some different locking of the doors up there in front of West. So these are things that they brought to us and so we've done that this summer. Also, just a lot of our kitchen help in a lot of our buildings, just saying, hey, we don't know who's coming in the morning. Sometimes we have a secret knock kind of thing because it's early in the morning. And so just installing just little peeples have helped and we've done that this summer as well. We've started to add some lighting to the back of the kitchen, the back parking lot at West. Those are things that we've done this summer. If you go down to the changes made, it just kind of lists everything, you know, as, as Doc said, we're working on all of our sites with the new high school, EC, all that kind of stuff. But just recently, we completed some tree work at Weston High School just to bring out the parking lot lights a little more so we have more lighting out there. Some of our people in the cafeteria, we don't have, we have AC in the cafeteria, but not in the kitchen area. So we just added some fans in there this summer to help those ladies in the cafeteria when it's crazy St. Louis weather. On occasion, on the north side of the middle school, we would, if it, if it rains crazy, everything kind of floats towards the building there. And if you just noticed in last week, Brian and Michael have carved up the concrete out there, put in the French drain and then snaked it out a hundred feet to the side. So we're doing some of that over there at middle school. You know, Andrew's going to talk about safety, our security cameras at East, and then we got West coming up. The roof project at West, completion date is supposed to be July thirty-first. That's not going to happen. But I am ninety-five percent sure we're going to be done before August twenty-second. I can tell you they're doing fantastic work. I'm very happy with the quality of the work they're doing. They started later, but I think they're starting to pick it up a little bit. So West project should be done, that roof project, that's good. We did the, we completed the roof at the middle school, the shingle roof, and we're just starting to complete the, the restoration of the middle school. That should be complete by next week. And then if you notice, we've got the new scoreboards up, baseball and softball, I'm sorry, baseball and football. And then we're in the midst of doing the goalposts. That should be done by the end of the week, next week. We've done all the floors, the gym floors, except the high school. That's coming up the first week of August, so we should have that done as well. And then the only other thing facility and grounds wise is we should be completing that transaction with scenic library before school starts. We do have a, a date with the title company on August eighteenth to transfer that. So that should be coming up as well. I think that's it. And then finally, we have some of the things, the new five-year plan. We have some of the things for FY twenty-four on there, but we'll talk about that as the school year happens. Any questions?
Any questions for Dr. Wayne? All right. We do not need a motion on this one. Thank you very much for the hard work.
Looks like a lot of work being done.
Yeah, I'm not going to worry about that West roof though. I keep looking at it. Don't look like I can make progress. I keep seeing that silver lump.
I'd say sixty percent, sixty-five percent are done.
I drove by and I'm like, why that good goalpost? They're gone.
The Martin Band refused the yield. All right, study groups.
Yeah, we've talked a little bit about this in previous board meetings, but what we're, what we're proposing tonight is that the evidence-based continued, Doug reported on that last month, continuing to twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And then we're going to insert C SIP, which is kind of a, a larger process that we go through every five years for our comprehensive school plan, improvement plan. And that C SIP is really timely because M SIP six starts this fall, but we're not in the first cycle of that, thank goodness. We'll be in the second cycle. So as we complete the M SIP, or excuse me, our C SIP this year, this coming year, we'll go right into our M SIP year with a, with a new fresh C SIP. We'll be looking for probably thirty, thirty-five members on that C SIP, so that's a bigger group. And we'll be getting information out to our patrons in about August, sometime in August. Start teasing them a little bit with a meeting, probably four meetings, three or four meetings at least throughout next, this year. We'll have a new C SIP by the, by the spring. What we need tonight is the motion for the two study groups, C SIP and evidence-based, but also probably outside of the motion, we might remind us who is on the evidence-based, you know, that we may not know. And then also.
I thought it was Aaron and myself.
Okay. Okay, and then volunteers for, we could have another one on the evidence-based. One of them too is fine, and we would love to have three, the maximum three for the C SIP. Austin is still sliding there to the first.
You all can fight over that two seats.
I'd rather do the evidence-based because that's more my career out expertise.
I'll do the C SIP.
I'll do the C SIP.
David, you want to do C SIP? All right. So, so for evidence-based, you have Aaron, Alice and myself. And for C SIP, you have Michael, Mary and myself.
Are you sure you want to do two?
Hey, it's about education. And I work from home so I can make the meetings.
Thank you. We appreciate the help. We'll still need the motion on the two groups.
I'll make that motion. It was motioned second. I'll second it. That's my, that's the, that's my adjudication of the night. Any more discussion? On favor? I, all opposed? I heard five zero.
How does that work?
All right, twenty-one, twenty-two exit survey. Dr. Berger?
Yeah, the rest of the agenda, President, will be Dr. Wayne Leonard. So I think, so I just call him. Yeah, just call him.
Hey, Jeremy?
All right, so let's talk, I, I call it HR update. I want to give you kind of an update on everything going on mid to late July. The first thing is current openings. If you look at that, we have five sped pair positions. I'm a little nervous about right now, just filling those. We have a Spanish teacher position that we've had available for over a month and not getting what we need there. And then we have special education teacher as well as a high school. We've gone back and tried to backtrack on all the sped ed that we've interviewed this year earlier that we didn't hit on. And so that hasn't given us what we wanted as well. So a little nervous there. Then we have a parents' teachers' part-time position. I'm not so worried about that. I think that will happen. And then I didn't get a chance to talk to Beau today, but things change kind of daily on the coaching. We do have a couple of RC openings still. Beau seems to think that we have some people in-house and so he's not as worried this time this year as he was last year. So I'll give you more of an update next month on that, but I just want to tell you kind of where we're at with personnel. We just have a hard time finding a lot of people right now. On a positive note, positive side, we got lucky last week. We got to go to a luncheon with, with Ms. Schenomire. Our, Whitney was our teacher of the year and so she's a regional finalist and so that was exciting. So we'll hopefully see how far she goes next couple of months. Another document that we have in there is turnover history. So there's three documents underneath there. Turnover history, we have like the last seven years of turnover in our district and kind of break it down before, you know, who's riffed, who's retired, who's been non-renewed, who's left us kind of thing. So if you look at that turnover history, we have in the last seven years, we have three years where we're under ten percent in turnover. We have three years where we are kind of in teens, anywhere from thirteen to seventeen. And then this year, our turnover rate is twenty-one percent. So that's the highest it's been in the last seven years. If you look at the movement too, so one of the things that Amy does a great job with is we kind of look at just movement inside. If you've noticed kind of the trend in the last couple of years of post-COVID, it's not only people coming in or leaving, it's people inside the organization moving around to new positions or want to try new things. So we've had the most movement internally in the last two years than we've had before that as well. That's just a trend that's happening. The only positive to that is that I think it's about three years ago, Doug and I started that aspiring admin team and that's been really good to help us identify future leaders. And this past year, you know, eight out of nine of them have moved up to some sort of administrative or higher level position in our organization. So we're excited about that. That's a plus, but that's kind of decimated that group a little bit. And so we'll kind of see what that means going forward. The last thing on there is that exit survey. And so we had twenty-two of our twenty-nine, so we kind of cut it off June first, so we had twenty-two of our twenty-nine actually take the test or the survey. And so there is so much effort that goes into it with Amy and then myself. Amy's kind of the lead, keeps kind of hounding people, people kind of keep pushing it back. It's not important, but I think we did pretty good this year. I know it's not great, but seventy-six percent of them taking it was good for us. Austin always asks me every year, hey, what are you seeing inside these numbers, you know? And so the big three that come to me when I look at comments, when I look at trends, I've got them listed there is communication evaluation process. I'm going to talk about those two first. Communication, whether it's in building or in district, you know, that's something that we, I mean, a couple of years ago, I was on a study group, just talked about that. It's about communication, you know? I mean, that is just something that we just try to improve on every year, whether it comes from us, the district level or building level. And we will continue to do that, but that's something that I noticed in there. One of the things that we've been hearing about for the last year or two is the evaluation process. And if you remember in May, we had some of our aspiring admin come in and talk about that evaluation process. And so we have changed that for this coming year. So I'm anxious to kind of see what that yields us in twenty-two, twenty-three for the evaluation process. The one that was just, I mean, there's no way around this kind of kicking the gut is the one, would you recommend Wright City, someone seeking employment? You know, those numbers aren't good there. I don't have it in front of me right now, but I could get that. The yes and the maybe combined, I think it was in the seventies or something. And so that hurts because it's, you always want them, whether they're coming or leaving, to be like, oh, this is a great place, you know? And so obviously we have, this year was one of the years where we had quite a few people that either were non-renewed or they resigned. And so that's going to skew that number a little bit. But from talking to a couple of people that did take the survey, another thing that, and I'm just making an assumption here, I, I don't know this for sure, but is maybe they gave us a maybe because of the, the salary. So if I would have never started here, I wouldn't have to leave here to get to a bigger or better paying job. You know, I've heard that. I, again, I can't say that that's the end all be all, but that's one thing that comes to mind. So we're trying to address some of those salary concerns, especially like in the middle of our salary schedule and, and at the end of it, you know? So I don't know, that, that's the one that bothers me. And I know that as a district and as a board, there's a lot of things we've tried to do for our staff, you know, whether it was the mental health day or we provide lunch at the end of the year or breakfast or sometimes we forgive some of these workdays, you know, we've done that a couple of times during COVID. I think we tried to do everything we could for our staff to keep them up and running. So this is something that, you know, we will talk about at nuts and bolts meeting with our, with our admin to try to figure out ways to, to make that better. But that's the one that kind of is tough to swallow.
So when I ask the question about retire, I mean, basically, and maybe I asked the question wrong, but you know, there's thirty-three people that left the organization, okay? Of the thirty-three, eleven left, three retired, and then they were here with us a long time. So, you know, we did a good job of keeping those individuals as long-term employees. So, I mean, kudos to them for working with us a long time and retiring. Then the eight that's resigned or non-renewed, those are people we basically pushed out because we did not want them back, right? Okay, so of the thirty-three, actually, there's twenty-two people that we wish would have stayed. Actually, the Tari's we wish they would have stayed too, but I understand that. So I think if you took the twenty-two and said, okay, this is our turnover rate, because the, I think that eight, you know, I mean, I mean, that, that's something we initiated, they, they didn't initiate that, we initiated that. So, and I don't, you're not going to be able to remember now, but I would suspect, because you said in the, in my, my question, that with the three out, we went from twenty-one to nineteen percent. So now if you took those additional eight out, now we're, now I think we're below, you know, fifteen percent.
Yeah, but I wanted to give you apples to apples.
I, I know that, but, but the thing is, you know, when people, when you start slicing and dicing this stuff up and someone's going to come to me and say, well, you got twenty-one percent turnover rate. I do, but of the tw- but of the thirty-three people that quit, eleven of them, three of them, they retired, kudos to them, eight of them, we didn't want back. And so of the, of the thirty-three, it's the twenty-two that, that I'm worried about. Okay, so that's the first, so that's the first thing. Second thing is, and a lot of times in corporate world, if you get fired, i.e. non-renewed or resigned because you weren't, you don't get to take the exit survey. I mean, basically it's, you know, you're getting fired, so you don't take it. So, so it's, so really the issue is, because that's going to skew the numbers. Yeah, I mean, they, they have a sour taste in them.
So let me add something to that. So out of the seven that did not take it, all seven left on their own.
Yeah, so, so, and so, and so that's going to skew the numbers too. Because, you know, obviously, I mean, I, twenty-one percent's a bad number, okay? I mean, we did, we did something wrong on the hiring process for those eight. Okay, so we own that, okay? The fact that, that we hired those eight individuals and we non-renewed them or they resigned because they were getting non-renewed, that's on our hiring process. So that's what we need to fix. Make sure we get, you know, work on that. But, but from a turnover rate perspective, you know, we can publish twenty-one percent, but we also ought to publish another number that says, you know, internally, what our real turnover rate was, was those twenty-two out of, out of whatever. And then I bet you that comes down into fifteen, I'm just doing real math, fifteen, sixteen Does that make sense? And, and does anybody disagree with my logic?
Well, we can say that, you know, you say we need to do better on our hiring, but here we are in a month of school starting and we're still missing. You know, that's making it a little bit of an issue there.
Well, so, but the other thing.
People to hire.
Well, the other thing that's going to happen though is, I think, is, and I was reading articles about, you know, there's teacher shortages and stuff like that.
Right.
School districts are scrambling. You know, I think one of the, one of the outflows from that is, I think we may have to, you know, the question is when we do our not, when we do our evaluations and stuff and make those decisions about non-renewal, you know, sometimes is, is what we have going to be better than what we can get on the open market? Because, you know, maybe the, the other teachers on the open market are also non-renewals, you know, our kids come out of, I don't know. I'm just spitballing here.
The teacher shortage is making it hard across the nation. Sure is. And then at Valdi, then there was a big, a lot of teachers who said, I'm, I'm done. I'm not taking that chance anymore. So it's made that teacher shortage even worse, so.
Yeah, but, you know.
So Austin, I did those numbers while you were talking and so that would, if you took the twenty-two, it drops us down to fourteen percent.
Okay, which now from a historical perspective, sixteen, eighteen, and twenty-one. So now that's a little more in line with where we're at.
Yeah, but sixteen, you had people you pushed out too.
I know.
So those numbers will go back.
So you don't know. I mean, it's going to be impossible to know that number.
That's why I tried to do it this way because it's, it's apple. Yeah. But, but like you're saying, we need to promote that, hey, in the turnover, we have different sections of turnover.
Yeah, yeah, the number, the apples, apples number is part of historical, but maybe starting this year in twenty-two, we publish two numbers. Okay, you know, the turnover rate is, and then the internal turnover rate is what the people we didn't want to lose is. And then that way then we can do those apples, apples, because number that really bothers me is those twenty-two.
So what you're talking about is functional turnover. Those eight people are what's referred to as functional turnover. Those individuals, you kind of hope they leave the organization. So I agree, you know, those should be taken out. What I would like to see with the twenty-two is I would be curious to see what longevity looks like for these one-year hires, two-year hires, three-year hires, because I think that tells a different question. If these are all one-year hires, then I think that does identify and give an opportunity in the hiring process. I mean, we need to reevaluate that. These are five-year people that are leaving. Then I think that makes a different question. I think you have to look at, okay, what does that mean? Why are we losing five-year people too? that mean? Why are we losing five-year people too? So I think, to me, that's important to look at that from the HR side. Okay, well, at what point are we leaving, we're losing these individuals? I've got significant ninety, my industry has significant ninety-day turnover. Then we probably are doing one of two things. We're either not onboarding them very well or we're not hiring the right people because our hiring process is flawed. So I think, you know, that, that I just think that is an important indicator too of what we need to change in that overall process too. We're just, yeah, we can put that question on there about how many years we've been in the organization.
Well, we, we have that number. We, we, we don't have to put it on, but we have that number.
Oh, is it? Do we have it?
Yeah.
We have it, yeah.
And from the comments section, um, it looked to me like there were a fair number of people that were pretty new.
Now, Erin wanted me to pass along from the comments, you know, one of the things is now we got all these new administrators, she liked the, the central office staff and she kind of picked on you. Did she talk to you? Okay, her comment, I'm going to look at, she gave me a text on it, so I'll look at my phone here. So I'll make sure I get it right. So I apologize, but I want to make sure I get it right. Okay, so here's what she said. Um, coaching for new admin from Berger on how to coach the staff. So basically, you know, one of the things she saw in the comment was that our administrators didn't do a very good job of coaching teachers. So, so the idea is what can central office do to help our new administrators coach the teachers? And that was something Erin brought up. Um, and the other thing was about the communication. Personally, I talked about that. So basically, her, her big thing was, what can you guys do to have a conversation with our mentor, our new administrators? Here's what you need to do to coach your staff. So that, so that, and they do a better, so they learn and can do a better job of coaching. That was, um, because obviously they're, they're new and they don't, and they're going, they're going to be rookies at coaching people. So they're going to need help coaching people. So coach, coach the coach to coach.
And that's different than evaluation.
That's different than evaluation, yeah. So that, that was what, that's what she was thinking. That's what she was, that's what she got out of the comments as she read. I have nothing else. Okay, any, any more issues on the exit survey? Okay, Dr. Wayne, I was given permission just to call you. For the next one.
Next.
We're doing the, uh, security camera.
So we kind of kicked this bucket down the road a little bit, um, for a while. We have extreme supply chain issues in technology right now. Um, we've been told for the last year that a lot of the high-end cameras just aren't available. We kind of kept waiting for that to ease off. It did not. Um, so we went ahead and did the bid for East. Um, as you can see by the pricing here, it's a little bit higher than what we've previously seen. And that's just the way the market is trending. Uh, our main goal was to get a, a system that kind of ran itself. We are obviously short and shaft all across the district. So we wanted something that we just know is going to turn on every day and is not going to need technology support constantly for them to run. Um, we had several vendors out. Most of them submitted more than one bid because they wanted to give us options. We felt that Hackett, uh, understood our needs the best and gave us the simplest solution for what we were looking for. Um, they also provided us with a standalone, um, door phone for the front door. We wanted something that wasn't included in the network for security reasons if the network went down. So that is our recommendation.
Any questions for Dr. Wayne or Andrea? I need a motion to accept the bid from Hackett Security, the amount of twenty-five thousand, eight forty-seven and fifty-six cents for the E security camera budget. So.
Second.
There's a motion in second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I heard five zero. Good job, Andrea. Thank you. And Dr. Wayne, you did a good job too. Okay, the memorandum of understanding with the Wright City Police Department, Dr. Wayne?
Yeah, so this started probably back in around April. Uh, Dr. Berger and I had conversations with Chief Cannon and then Lieutenant Matthews came on just recently, the last couple of months. And so we have, uh, an agreement with, uh, Wright City PD, but this makes it more formal in fact of, you know, what is our chain of command, uh, what are our expectations? It just kind of outlines a little more. Um, this is our first effort with this MOU. I, I anticipate this changing, um, down the line as things change in safety. But we needed a, a jumping off point. So we looked at other MOUs with other school districts and, uh, police departments. And so we think it's pretty thorough. We've gone through it. We did some additions back and forth to the police and us. And so this is the final product, um, that we'd like for you to approve, um, moving forward.
Now, has the board of all been approved this yet?
Um, I do not believe so, no.
Are, are they going to come back to us and, and, uh, give me, or give us heck about, well, I want this, this, this in there? Or do you think that-
No, no, I think, uh-
You think Cannon?
Oh, yeah. Chief said he's been in contact with them from the get-go. Like I said, it's been two or three months in the making. So I'm assuming they're knowing that this is going on and okay with it.
I wish they'd go first, but. All right, I, I mean, I read it and I was fine with it. I mean, I had my questions about, you know, the training, you know, should be required versus, you know, what the contract, what the memorandum of understanding said, but he explained to me why that's like that. So I was okay with it. Anybody else have any questions? Kind of a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for the Wright City Police Department as presented. So moved. There's a motion in second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Five zero. Uh, Mary, uh, needs some travel reimbursement. I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second? Motion in second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? As staying?
As staying.
The vote was four, zero, one. And then does anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I heard five zero. And then, uh, in accordance with the provisions of six, ten, oh, twenty-one, the revised statute of Missouri, the R2 Board of Education will meet in closed session in order to discuss six, ten, oh, twenty-one, thirteen. Individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings to records pertaining to employment or applicants for employment, fourteen records which are protected from disclosure by law. I need a motion to move to closed session? So moved. There's a motion in second. Any more discussion? Vote call starting with Austin. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.